Can we call the Lowell School Committee meeting to order?
Yes.
Please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Would Madam Secretary please take the rule?
Ms. Martin. Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Chow. Ms. Chun.
Here.
Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Darity.
Here.
Ms. Delay.
Here.
Two absent, five present.
Thank you. Before we go to unfinished business, I know we have two items on the agenda. One is to update, discuss regarding the search for an interim superintendent, and the other one is to renew our budget discussions. I know we have a few people in the audience who would like to speak to us about the budget, and because they are students, I'd like to entertain a motion to move them up on the agenda. By Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi, all those in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. Madam Secretary, do you have names of people?
Yeah, I just want you to know, I just was told they're having network issues.
I'm hearing they're having network issues. That means they're not recording us?
I'm not sure. Someone might want to check before we go any further.
Dr. Hawke, can you check to see?
They're saying it's not on TV.
But are they at least recording it? Especially where the students will be speaking.
So who was that motion by Stacy and others?
Mr. Rossi.
To, uh, just kind of rules. To allow the public speakers to talk.
Is it recorded and is it on the air right now?
We are on the air now, and it's being recorded. Awesome. Okay, so what we'll do is those who registered in advance will be called up to speak first. You're allowed five minutes per person. Please state your name and address. If you want to tell, if you're a student and you want to tell us the school you're with, that'd be great, too. And then if there's anyone else who wants to speak who hasn't signed up, it is a public hearing, so you could just come to the podium and we will acknowledge you. Okay? Mr. Lay?
Madam Chair, the students don't need to tell their address, right?
Oh. Do they not?
You're supposed to state it for the record, but I don't, I'm not going to include it in the minutes, the address, so.
If I could, I would.
You don't have to say the address.
They could just say what school they come from would be sufficient.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Lay. So you would just, if you want to say the school, it's up to you. Okay. Good point. Thank you. Madam Chair, Secretary?
Josephine Ogunsey.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josephine Ogunsey, and I'm coming from Wang Middle School, where my class, where my class is currently working on our Generation Citizen project about how poverty impacts mental health. Esser funds were put into effect on March 27, 2020. These funds were their direct response to the impact COVID had on mental health. This included providing more social workers and more mental health services to support the students. In September 2024, the funds that are currently paying for the social worker's salary will be cut off. It's a major problem that we believe needs to be addressed immediately. The social workers we have right now have helped countless kids who have been and are in crisis. What will the kids do when the social workers are gone? And what will the social workers do when they've lost their source of income? We wouldn't have to worry about this if these individuals kept their jobs. This is why we believe that Lowell Public Schools should make room in their budget to pay for the positions currently being funded by Esser. Kids need people to make sure that they're safe. And people need jobs. The list goes on and on. The social workers and the kids are relying on the Esser funds to give them comfortable and a safe place to be in school. Their jobs are to make sure, all of this circles back to LPS. Their jobs are to make sure that their schools are a safe and comfortable place for the students to learn. The kids will not feel safe if they do not have people to support them in school. Social workers are beneficial to kids, and that shouldn't go unnoticed. The pandemic may be gone, but the effect it had on the students still lingers. Thank you all for your time.
Dee Sanders-Sopan.
Dear School Committee members and members of the district administration, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Vanak Pang. I live at 12424 La Vila, and I'm a junior at the Career Academy.
My name is Xander Sopan. I live at 23 Andrew Streets. I am also a junior at the Career Academy as students, as students at the Career Academy, we are fortunate to have teachers who have good relationships with their students, making their classes exciting for learning and having strong communications when working with us. While we love the stuff at the Career Academy, there are things we wish we could change about the school. One thing that we would like is the opportunity to have more programming during school such as photography, studio, and culinary. We have an area for a culinary kitchen with all the equipment but needed to be installed. With the kitchen completed, we could run a full-time culinary program where we could cook for our students and staff. Having programs like these might even encourage students to come to school more often.
Another thing that could make the Career Academy better is building upgrades. Our bathrooms need to be upgraded because right now they break regularly and are very rundown. Also, since we don't have a large indoor gym space, we could benefit from an upgraded outdoor basketball court. Even though we students at the alternative school, we feel though we deserve an equitable learning environment and hope you will support us. Thank you for your time.
If I could, I also want to recognize the two young men are part of our Superintendent's Advisory Council. I'm going to be very sad to be leaving you at the end of the year, and I'm hopeful you stay as involved and as engaged as part of district leadership. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that moment.
Concludes the speakers. Is there anyone else?
Would anyone else like to speak on the budget or the interim superintendent? We could hear about that, too. Okay. Thank you for your time, for speaking with us. And I wonder if before the students leave, I know they're going to be heading out, if I could ask Dr. Boyd, are the social workers on the Esser funding, and what will happen when that funding goes out in a year?
So there is a plan for mitigating the fiscal cliff as the committee has widely, wisely planned over the course of three years. The positions will be able to be, and our current forecast will be able to be funded through the Student Opportunity Act going forward. Ms. Turner, can you share a little bit more about how that plan will be funded going forward?
As the superintendent stated, we have been moving funds over to, I mean, not funds, positions, over to the local budget. We do have something called a mental health supplement that's currently being funded through Esser, but that is just for additional mental health. If the school elected to spend the Student Opportunity Act funds on the current social workers, they could continue with the two if they have two.
Ms. Thompson?
I just want to thank the speakers. It's really fantastic to come out and speak. Can be a little nerve-wracking, so I appreciate that. And, you know, I'm glad that, one of the things that really impressed me about this young lady, I'm sorry, I can't remember her name, is that, Josephine? Is that you didn't just talk about the impact it would have on the students, but the impact it would have on the social workers, so that, that level of thoughtfulness, I really appreciated personally for the two gentlemen, culinary school. My sister graduated from culinary school, so I would definitely love to connect you all to her. She can talk to you about, you know, her, her journey and what she's doing now in the, in the field. And if it does pan out well, definitely, I think that it's really important to have pathways, and so I would love to work towards that end. So thank you again for coming to speak.
So then, Ms. Delay? I saw your hand up, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say a good job for all the students who came up to speak. And I want to echo the student who mentioned about bathroom need to be fixed and facility needs to be updated. I have so many times phone calls from staff from, like, McCullough Schools and other schools who complain about being hot and, and whatnot. There were a bunch of stuff that needed to be done. So, thank you for reminding me of things that need to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. I'm wondering, since we have the Career Academy students here, if my colleagues would be open to starting with the budget and looking at that specific school? Because I did have concerns about that. And then they, they would have the benefit of hearing the discussion specifically about the culinary program. But I want to get the will of the body, because the next item on the agenda is the interim superintendent search, so I'm open to what, I'd need a motion to move that up ahead. Mr. Rossi?
Yeah, I'd put that motion in. Basically, I was going to ask that because I wasn't able to come on Thursday, and I knew you specifically wanted to look at alternative schools. So I, I was thinking this would be a perfect time to, to look at that. So this works well. And you guys all did an incredible job. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Thompson, to move into the budget discussion now. And I know that we have in Section 5 in our book is the school by school. And so I'm wondering if we could go right to the Career Academy? Because I have a couple of questions and I, and some concerns, and then obviously I want to hear from you guys, too. So what page is that, Ms. Turner? On Section 5? It's alphabetical, it looks like. So I'm finding the Career Academy on, oh, it's not listed. It doesn't have a page number, but it is alphabetical if you have it in this book. So my question really to the administration is, I know we talked about with Esser funds over the last few years that no school would be getting less money, right? So I'm wondering why the Le Blank and the Career Academy, two alternative schools, were the only schools that were level-funded? And we actually saw a decrease in pure, per pupil expenditure for the upcoming year.
Yeah, so you're, you're raising a question about our small school strategy. And when a school has significantly reduced enrollment, as the schools you're referring to, less than 100 students at each school, they have to be funded differently through a small school adjustment in order to ensure that they can run basic programming and ensure basic level of services to students. So both schools are significantly supplemented outside of what the fair student funding model does in order to ensure that the small school model can sustain itself. So Ms. Turner can share with you a little bit more about how that approach is taken. But what you're seeing there is, is part of our approach to ensuring that our small schools can sustain themselves. And here we have, in Lowell, we have a variety of schools that would be otherwise considered small schools in other areas, such as the Washington and the Moody. But we're talking specifically about the schools with less than 100 students, which are our alternative schools by and large, as well as our special education therapeutic schools. They get funded based on the number of students and the actual students that are enrolled. So our special education schools get funded based on programmatic needs, based on the students' IEPs and forecasted students who are coming in with IEPs. In some cases, some students have multiple adults around an individual child. That all then gets funded, gets reconciled through our special education department. Our alternative schools model gets funded by a small school adjustment, and then Mr. Skinner supports them within their budgeting process to ensure that the budget sustains the program for the students while maintaining the small school size. Because a traditional school allocation or appropriation wouldn't be sufficient to maintain a small school within a district structure. Ms. Turner?
Thank you, Superintendent. I feel like we've got the message about this, except my understanding of the numbers is that the enrollment has not decreased at the Career Academy. And that's really my second question, because if you look at DESI's published enrollment numbers and your school projections, there's discrepancies. And we do have lower actual current enrollment than projected, like Lowell High has 100 less students than projected. But while the Career Academy, you're projecting 33% less when the actual DESI numbers are showing higher than that. And also, are you including, when you talk about numbers at the Career Academy, the students at the Engagement Center? Because that would make it over 100 students, wouldn't it? And that's part of the Career Academy.
Yes. So the student forecasting, you're looking at lag time enrollment. So DESI does not have our forecasting for next year. They won't have next year's enrollment data until October. So these forecasts are done by our data office in the budget cycle to ensure that we're funding for next year. In addition, you have a fall reconciliation line that the school committee has access to, which is also put in place to ensure that any type of variation or variability in the fall compared to our projections, that that, too, can make sure we restore that and ensure that everybody has a level line of funding. Ms. Turner, do you want to share further?
I do want to reiterate that we do have the fall reconciliation line. For instance, last year, Liam Skinner and myself, we met with the Career Academy principal and did increase their budget by over $100,000 to add positions that she requested. We would not have been able to do that in the regular budgeting cycle because, as the superintendent pointed out, the school would get significantly less if we ran just the numbers through the algorithm. The algorithm is not meant for small schools, so we did do that as a separate budgeting item. So that's why we do have the fall reconciliation line, so that when we do have requests, for instance, when they mention the kitchen, that type of thing, those are the type of things we could fund, but it would be through a separate process.
So I understand your point, but I just want to draw your attention to the DESI number. So in FY '23, we projected 60 students at the Career Academy when they actually ended up with 88. But aside from the numbers, I think that we are starving the Career Academy. I was over there, I did visit a bunch of schools today, really prompted by Ms. Del Rossi's motion about the Sullivan bathrooms, but also because students have been inviting me to come and talk to them. That kitchen, that culinary program, that was a grant six years ago. $25,000 worth of kitchen equipment that is sitting in a room. The electricity has been brought up to speed. All that's left is the gas hookup and figuring out the layout, and we have done nothing. And we are level-funding, that means they didn't get any more money for the new year budget, just like the Le Blank, which is another alternative program. Meanwhile, we're seeing hundreds of kids that we're losing at the high school that are not graduating. And I, in, in addition to that, we had a discussion at last week's meeting about a $1.25 million investment in a new alternative program. And so I just have some real concerns about why we're not supporting the program we have. And final note about the Career Academy, and then I would love to hear from you guys. When that project started, that was a grant, and they had the, what is the position? Community school manager, which I believe we now have seven in the district. All the Renaissance schools have one. But the Career Academy does not have a community school manager, when they were the initial school that started that proposal. And we saw success. We saw kids graduating. So I really think as a committee, we need to look at where we're putting our funds. I'm not against exploring other alternative programs, but I think we have a program, and we have not been adequately funding it. Mr. Lay, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be able to follow what we are discussing because I am looking at, I'm trying to find where, what number that you've been talking about that has been reduced. So I, if you don't mind sharing that information with me, because right now I'm looking at chapter, page six, that described fiscal year '23 and '24 for the Career Academy and the Le Blank School, and I don't, just don't see any number being reduced. So I just want to, want to be able to follow what we're talking about. Thank you.
Ms. Turner, would you like to address Mr. Lay's questions?
I agree. I don't see a reduction either. I looked in Section 4 to do a side-by-side comparison of the funding source, and it's $1.6 million on both pages, and so it was level-funded, not reduced.
So explain what level-funded means.
Level-funded means it's not, we didn't increase or reduce it. It was held flat.
But could, Madam Chair, because I think we're co-mingling several conversations here.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Dr. Boyd.
Sure. So here we're talking about how the funding moves across the schools in order to design programming. The budget is, the budget conversation for the school committee is about appropriation. You've got several appropriation lines through which these kind of programming decisions could be had. One, we've increased the facilities line to $10 million. So if you're talking about kitchen repairs, bathroom repairs, anything of the like, that's all of that, large scale. Most of the work at the Career Academy would be done in conjunction with the Department of Public Works, but the committee has an appropriation line from which you can draw for those specific projects. Second, you have the school funding, which is done, as I mentioned, in our very, very small schools. It's done in conjunction with our program offices so that we can ensure that programming is met for every kid. That's been done as well. Third, you have your alternative schools supplemental support line, which is $1.25 million. That can be used in a multitude of ways. That'll be designed out by our program staff as we identify students and their program needs who aren't currently enrolled in school. So if students were, for instance, enrolled in the Career Academy, additional funds would be provided to the Career Academy to support. Or alternatively, if this committee determines another or different or supplemental program is needed, those funds could be used there. Fourth, you have a fall reconciliation line. That line is around stabilizing the budget as we base it on forecasts, and then we get actuals in the fall. So the committee then will reconcile your budget or have an opportunity to through a series of budget transfers once you have actual enrollment. So you have the budget appropriation lines that are, I believe, in the line areas, line items that you need them in order to do planning going into the fall. However, specific descriptions of how those dollars are going to be used and in which programs, right now you have ultimate flexibility. There's not a requirement or an obligation that you specify whether it's for a stove versus a gas hookup, or whether it's for a social worker or a culinary teacher. You have the line items appropriated, at which time, through the course of the summer into the fall, staff can do that analysis for you and can bring back those recommendations for you based on each of those lines. But those line items, the alternative schools, $1.25 million, fall reconciliation will continue to be adjusted as we get the actual numbers. The budget is still being discussed within the Senate Ways and Means. That line item right now currently is at $1 million. You have a facilities item that is at $10 million. And you have the Career Academy budget line that's at $1.6 million. Ms. Turner?
One, one point, yes.
$1.6 million. So you have sufficient appropriation, significant appropriation. That would be the question usually within our budget hearing. And then from those lines, as staff come back to you with program recommendations, the question back from the committee, which funding line are you suggesting we use for that particular investment? And you have all four of those that can be pulled from as we move from the close of this year into the start of next year. And as, as the committee remembers from this past year, budgeting process is a full-year process. It comes back with a series of budget transfers throughout the course of the year, as well as typically a significant reconciliation in both the fall, when we get actual student numbers, and then again in the winter, when we're starting to move into the next fiscal year. This year, you recall, you just approved a $5 million budget transfer for supplemental pay for staff. That comes through this budget reconciliation process, so.
I just wanted to throw my two cents into Mr. Lay's question. So every school, we, we allocated about $10 million for the fair student funding, that every school was going to have additional funds based on what their needs were to ask for stuff, right? And it went through the central office process. When I visited the Career Academy and I spoke with the young gentleman who told me, please give us the culinary program, we've got all this kitchen stuff that's just sitting in the air, the idea for a basketball court out in the parking lot, it's not, they're not huge asks. When I asked, what did you request for your new position with the extra money that every school got? I was told we were level-funded. We didn't get a new position. They don't have a position. Well, you've got your community school manager, right? Because that was started at the Career Academy. No. Seven other schools. Seven other schools have that as guardrails, like we did with health teachers. We said, everybody's going to have a certified health teacher. Central paid for that, not coming out of the school budget. So, this is where my concern is, that, and when I looked at the DESI numbers, we have less than what DESI says we have for students. We're basing their budget on not the real numbers that DESI has, unless the numbers are wrong that DESI has. But I just think, where we're looking at putting over $1 million into a new alternative program, I think we need to be investing in the programs that we have, that have been graduating kids, I might say, our most high-risk kids. You know, the Engagement Center has, what, almost 70, right? That program is part of the Career Academy. And Ms. Turner?
Just so, just for clarification, the kitchen, I did work with the Career, I worked a couple of years ago trying to get that funded. It is, it's not a funding issue right now. It's an issue with getting the city to actually do the electricity and the gas. I can follow up with them to see if we can get that going, because it is such a waste.
Yes.
Right. It is such a waste. I do recall the, I worked with Ricky Underwood, and he did get the city, I think they did do the electricity now, and now it's just the gas. But I'll follow up with that. And as far as the basketball court, I actually have extra funding. That's a great request. I mean, if they don't have a gym, why wouldn't we, that's very affordable. I mean, it's a couple of hundred dollars for one of those things, so that's definitely doable. So, I mean, we can...
Thank you. And anyone else want to comment on this? And then, we can move on. I just wanted you guys to hear what we're working with in terms of trying to provide funding. I can tell you, I don't know how many of you have been there. It had been years since I went. We do not have equity in this city in terms of the buildings that our students are in. I also visited the Bartlett, and I had a motion over two years ago to replace those lockers. They were going to use the high school lockers. They got thrown out by mistake. And the kids are saying, we go to other schools, and they don't look like this. They don't have one toilet, the only toilet that works doesn't have a door. I mean, some of this is on us. Some of this, we can say, we've got to work closer with the city. But we cannot be talking about fairness and equity and go into some of these buildings and see the way we're saying to our students, it's important, your education is important, but we don't have a bathroom that works for you? Or we don't have a program that you're going to be interested in? We've got stuff in, and by the way, that grant, they want to know what we've done with the $25,000. So, every time that comes up, maybe a little bit of work gets done, but...
So...
And we look, I mean, Dr. Boyd will talk about, we have options, but they're not bringing it forward to us.
So, Madam Chair, so, are we going to decide to modify the funding tonight, then, to, so that it's fair, as you...
I think, I would love a motion that says that the Career Academy gets a community manager, just like the other, the community school manager role, just like the other seven Renaissance schools, and that we begin to look at the facility needs. My understanding from Mr. Underwood was the electrical is done, it's a gas hookup, and figuring out the plan of how the kitchen's going to get laid out.
So, you want to have another position in the school? Is that what...
No, I want to invest the facilities money to do the work, if we don't have it earmarked, to earmark it, to do the work for some of these schools that are so not, I don't even know the word, they're not adequate facilities, as much as we can do. I know, Ms. Del Rossi, you were looking at, you know, the special education program at the Laura Lee. You know, some of it's out of our range, but some of this stuff, we could be doing. The fact that we level funded them, whatever reason, and I don't know the Le Blank, I ran out of time, I didn't make it over there, is a problem for me. We're not giving up on these kids, and we shouldn't be giving up on the program. Ms. Del Rossi?
I guess, can I get a further explanation of what level funded means and why it prohibits from hiring any other position? And like, what the reason why the Career Academy lost their community manager and why they wouldn't be able to hire a new one, I guess? I'm looking for background and an explanation, and also a definition, vocabulary lesson.
Sure.
Dr. Boyd?
Again, it feels like we're having several different conversations outside of the budget conversation. So, our very, very small schools, and I hesitate to say small, because we have smaller schools, and then we have really small schools, less than 100 students. They plan program based on individual students that are projected to attend the school. What you're seeing on DESI is lagging prior year. So, in this case, with the Career Academy, it can't be a school-based budget, because they wouldn't receive enough funds, as we do with the other schools, in order to fund a stable, sustainable program. So, in that case, what we do in terms of budget appropriation is we appropriate a level-funded budget, and the principal, in this case, who's here, Ms. Lachlan, will work with Mr. Skinner in order to ensure that what the program is meets the needs of students. The forecast of student enrollment is done on a student-by-student basis. We actually pull up the student enrollment through Aspen and then forecast based on the number of students who are going to go the next year. So, the level funded is to get them funded so that they can maintain their programs for hiring season right now, and then they'll meet with Mr. Skinner throughout the course of time as students are being enrolled to make additional requests. You heard from Ms. Turner, it was increased by over 100,000 last year. So, the committee has several line items that will allow that process to take place. Those were the line items that I mentioned previously, because right now, you're in May. The Career Academy's program is determined by students who enroll based on various criteria, not a catchment zone, not a standard enrollment process, it's an individualized enrollment process. So, based on that student enrollment process, then the principal will continuously work with Mr. Skinner. In the case of the Le Blank, they work with Dr. Vicente across. But for your budget each year, level funded in order to make sure that we can provide the appropriation to allow that process to take place. And it means same dollars each year within your budget book.
Same dollar from, same amount as last year, but costs typically go up.
Regardless of decline of students.
And when the students come in, Dr. Boyd, is it then adjusted, so they get more funding? Because if you projected 60 and they have 140, because you're saying under 100, but I thought the Engagement Center was part of it?
Yeah. Quite a bit different with a virtual school-type Engagement Center approach. There's, so you have two line items that allow you to reconcile at once specifically to alternative schools. That's a $1.25 million. That allows us to recruit back roughly 50 to 60 students where you already have appropriation for program needs. So, the difference there is, we don't know what program they will go to ultimately when we recruit the students back. They could ultimately go to Lowell High School, could go to Le Blank, could go to Career Academy, might need another program choice. $1.25 million. Fall reconciliation for programming overall, not specific to alternative schools, but you could certainly access that. Right now, that's at $1 million. My recommendation, as it was last year, as the budget gets finalized, if the committee ultimately receives additional dollars through the budgeting, this is a line item where additional dollars can go as you get it finalized through the legislature. That happens from time to time. One year when I was, I believe, we came back in the fall and had $2 million additionally appropriated prior to our summer break. So, you have both of those line items that allow you to reconcile. The third, with questions of facilities, none of our schools get allocated dollars for facilities. You have a separate facilities line, and in this case, that's $10 million. So, $10 million, then the program staff will make, come back to you with program recommendations, and that's the fund that you'll go to. In most cases, that is not done equally across schools. I believe the committee has earmarked $6 million of that for one school, which is the STEM. So, you'll have additional, $4 million additionally within that, that you could allocate differently across, all to one school, to multiple schools. But overall, we anticipate that the facility needs across the district are in the hundreds of millions, so it will truly have to be prioritized.
Thank you. Does that help, Ms. Del Rossi? So, I just want a further question. The community managers, the school managers, is that a guardrail position for those schools that are having it? Or do they, they're taking it out of their budget?
It's centrally, it's centrally allocated. So, the difference here with a school this size, in order to sustain programming, is the district-level community school manager supports the smallest program directly. So, the small program here, again, less than 100 students, will be, will be supported directly by the centralized position, which is additional beyond the, and you've got additional two, so you have nine school-based positions, as well as an additional centralized position, 10 positions overall. The centralized position supports the nine, but less intensely, because they have their own community school manager, and then supports directly the program at the Career Academy or any other program that would be started up or initiated, that wouldn't be able to sustain a position on their own. And some of this is done strategically, based on our mitigation of the inevitable fiscal cliff at the end of the next year.
But they had, they had a community school manager.
That was, that was the program that was shifted to a district-wide focus when the grant ran up, absent a grant funding for a position again. And I'm sharing with you, as a former principal of an alternative school of less than 100 students, where I also simultaneously served as superintendent, and this is how I funded my own school, where I was the principal, as superintendent, because it's just simply not sustainable to do a student-by-student enrollment. So, when the grant ran out, we moved it to a centralized position, so it could support multiple schools, which then, if you think about it in that way, almost like a pie, you can divide up the cost, because the cost is not allocated to one school, it's allocated across many. And that's how we support a lot of our small schools. We'll have individual staff positions that we identify centrally, but they're supporting multiple schools across. And now, you have nine school-based community managers, plus you have a district-level community school manager that reports to Ms. Phillips. So, if it's a school-based grant, you have more opportunities with funding. But absent school-based grant, we've got to make sure that we can sustain funding and stabilize programming across. And it is, well, I'll tell you, you know, a good portion of my career has been built around designing and advocating and supporting alternative programming. It becomes very difficult to sustain because the funding costs for individual students within very, very small schools. So, right now, you have a sustainable budget outlook that has been worked across multiple years in order to ensure that we can not only sustain these programs, but the committee now has flexibility to build additional small programs. At one point, two years ago, the committee was entertaining the notion of additional virtual academy. Those are the types of programs you can entertain with this type of funding structure.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, do we want to stay on the budget, or go to the, and just begin the process of doing line by line? What is the wish of the body?
We might want to go back to the interim thing, because if we don't get through it, we're going to want to recess.
Okay. Machine made the point, we should do the interim superintendent stuff, because if we don't finish the budget, we know we're going to recess and finish it next week. Update discussion and deliberations on options, job description, the proposal by MASC, and the timeline for the hiring of an interim superintendent. Any thoughts on the materials that were sent to us? We need a motion to approve the interim superintendent job description.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Martin to approve, I'm going to break it up into...
Mr. Lay.
Oh, Mr. Lay?
I have a question.
Okay.
But I'll second it, too.
Second by, motion by Mr. Lay to approve the job, approve the job description, seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Martin?
I just had a quick question on the salary. And, Dr. Hall, I don't know if this came up when you were talking with Mr. Kucha. I know, I believe it said at, what, 225 to 250, is that? 225 to 240? This is the corrected version right here that we have?
Yes.
Okay. My only question was, because I know when we were having some previous conversations, we talked about that it wouldn't necessarily be at the same level as a, like a full-fledged superintendent position, that with the interims, they tend to be, have a slightly lower salary requirement. I mean, I'm not looking to, you know, bring this down in any dramatic way. I'm just asking, is that the kind of industry standard?
That discussion didn't come up with Mr. Kucha. That amount that I put down for your guys' discussion somewhat parallels what similarly situated districts are paying for a superintendent or slightly less. I took a little bit off because of what you stated, but I certainly expected the school committee to deliberate on that, that particularly. And also, I just want a confirmation on the length, too. I believed you all wanted it for a year, but I think a discussion should happen about that to make sure that's what the committee wanted as well.
When you looked at some, did you see any, like, kind of similar-sized districts looking for interim?
No, I didn't. What I saw is, there's a shortage of superintendents generally, estimated to be between 20 and 30%, you know, that are fully qualified for the opening jobs, and the salaries going up and up.
I don't know if there are any other opinions on, on that. I don't have a number in mind, so I'd be open to if anyone had any suggestions.
Any other thoughts or comments on this? Has the district stuff been all updated? When we're looking at this page that tells about Lowell, is that accurate?
Yes, Ms. Darty. So, there was, I think, like I put in the email to you all, a number of departments assisted, the data department updated all the demographic data about the district and the city of Lowell, and HR provided the numbers in regards to administrative and staff, and denoted some new positions that have been relatively new, and the communications department assisted with the statement on continuing progress on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, which I think came out pretty good. But that's something, too, the committee should probably review, make sure they want it the way listed. So, you know, it was a team effort, this came together. Mr. MASC didn't review the final version, but it closely parallels the old one, and Mr. Kucha had suggested only slight adjustments were needed, which I think we accomplished. But there was a lot of research involved, yes.
The reason I ask is, I see you have director of facilities, two. So, I thought we had one director of facilities and two assistant directors of facilities.
Yes.
I mean, I might be wrong, but I just...
I think you're right on that. I don't see that right now, but we have two area...
It's under the administration and staff listing?
We have two area facility managers and a director of facilities, so we could update that before we publish it.
Okay. And the dropout rate, the breakdown by race, that's all updated?
Those are all verified by the data department using the 2022 numbers that were reported.
Any other thoughts or comments? Are we ready to take a vote on this? Do you want to adjust the salary, Ms. Martin? I think we could make a wider range and then see who comes forward in terms of interim candidates.
I do think that that might be, I mean, that'd certainly be amenable to that, if we wanted to look at even just, just dropping the floor from like 225, maybe down to 210.
Okay.
And then, if we leave it at the 240, we have that flexibility should some exceptional interim kind of appear.
Right. Because I think, like anything, you'd be looking at their experience, right?
Right.
So...
So, I'd make that in the form of a motion.
So, motion by Ms. Martin to have the salary range be 210,000 to, what's your highest?
240. I'd keep it at the 240.
240, okay.
And also, just to answer Dr. Hall's other question, I would also support the full year. I think that's what we're looking for.
Any other thoughts on the job description? I know, Ms. Thompson, you were interested in making sure that we had some language about the work we've done around diversity, and is that in there to your satisfaction?
Sorry, I'm very stuffy tonight, so I apologize for my voice. But yes, it is the final bullet. I think that it was worded in a way that will get the conversation going at the very, at the very bare minimum. I think that's one of those things, that it's good that the bullet's there, but the conversation is really what's going to denote how much work the person has really done in that area.
And Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For me, I feel that... Thank you, Madam Chair. For me, I feel that because this is only an interim, 240 was supposed to be a, a amount that we're supposed to pay if Dr. Boyd were to continue. And I feel that the interim has, is a little bit different. And for me, I, I would rather have the, the max range for the interim superintendent to be lower than the 240 that, that we wanted for Dr. Boyd. So I, I feel that if we cap at 225, I would be very comfortable.
So we already have a motion to change it to 210 to 240, are we?
So, I don't think we-
Maybe we do a roll call on that or do other, I mean, because even if it says to 240, it doesn't mean we're going to offer that. It just gives us that range. And it might attract candidates who have more experience and we do have a short timeline. And I don't know that I've got a second on Ms. Martin's motion.
Dr. Hall, that, that number, I'm sorry, I may have missed it. That was a number you came to through your, kind of your assessment, but not Mr. Kucha? Or was it vice versa? I'm sorry.
Mr. Kucha didn't provide numbers on that. I guess the assumption I had is that the committee wanted to attract candidates, which Mr. Kucha suggested who may be retired who are
Okay.
willing to do an interim for one year. So in my assumption, that that was a person that probably had anywhere from five to 15 years of superintendent experience. And that's why I thought you might like arrange that high. I really don't have any personal opinion on what the, the top of the range is. It is going to be difficult when someone sees a range and they apply it. There could be a difficult discussion between you all and the person
Bring it down.
you've picked. But you do have full discretion, obviously, as Mr. Kucha said you should alter this anyway. You saw it, he saw no limitations on how you could change this.
Okay, thank you.
Stowe Rossi?
I just want to clarify, didn't we vote also in the last two, or two meetings ago where we first started discussions about hiring either interim or permanent to open this up to either interim or permanent? So this may be a good way to, so we could be hiring for either?
My understanding was we voted by big majority that we were going to go for an interim search. That was the vote.
But at one point, did it, did we not vote that this interim person could also be permanent at some point?
No, but they could apply to be permanent. It doesn't limit you from doing that.
Okay.
So I still have-
I guess I was just thinking in my head, it would just attract more people to apply, I guess, overall. Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
So, yeah, I was going to say that this interim, we're not limiting that this interim cannot be, become a permanent in the future. And for me, I feel that doesn't matter if you have 15, 20 years' experience as superintendent and whatnot. If you come to Lowell for the first few months, you're pretty much, you're just learning, you're learning. So I, I feel that to have a, such a high-range cap, you know, it's, I don't think we're spending the money correctly in that way. If, if this interim come in, know exactly what Lowell is all about, yeah, it makes sense, it makes sense. But I don't think we, I don't think we, we should pay that much for, for somebody that we don't know.
I hear, I hear you on that. So we have a motion. Did we get a second on that motion? Okay, so now we're looking at a different motion regarding salary because we didn't get a se, I mean, I'd be happy to second it.
So, so I want to amend the motion to have the cap at 225, continue with Ms. Martin's motion and cap at 225.
So the motion is to have the salary range be 210 to 225?
For one year.
For one year.
Just with a friendly amendment? Could we get it to 230?
Do I have a second over there, Ms. Thompson?
No, I was going to say-
I was going to ask Mr. Lay if he would make a friendly amendment to do it from 210 to 230. I think it's just the evenness of the numbers easier. It's a little bit on the other side, so it might attract people that are at the 235. So you're getting the people that might be a little bit more highly qualified, but they'll still go for the 230. So, just my thought.
Mr. Lay, are you comfortable with that?
I, I okay with that.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Lay's motion is to have the salary range be 210 to 230, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Six chaise, one absent.
So the second part of that is to look at the search timeline. I don't think we're locked into this, but this is, kind of gives us a boilerplate idea of what the timing would be. Did we have any comments or suggestions around that? Or can I just entertain a motion to accept the timeline?
As written.
As written by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Stowe Rossi. Comments, concerns? Ms. Martin?
Thank you. You know, I do think that this is doable. I do think it's aggressive, which I think we need. So, you know, I'm more than happy to support this. I just think we do need to be kind of honest with ourselves, that we may need to make adjustments to this as we move forward. But I think as a, you know, as a starting point, to have a May 31st deadline, I think gets us moving in the right direction right away. From that point forward, we may have to make some accommodations. But I definitely think this should be the, the goal we've set for ourselves, to make it through this process in a timely way in order to have the interim superintendent begin in that July timeframe. So, happy to support the motion.
All those in favor of the timeline, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, so now we can go back to the budget session. So I think just for purposes of getting through this, we might want to just start from page one and actually be voting line by line. Last week, we discussed more information. I don't know if people got information that they wanted to get or need more information. Ms. Martin?
I was going to make one suggestion. I know that there were a few items that we had had as we went through, that we had some kind of, like, continuing questions on positions that we didn't have job descriptions yet. There were a few other things, maybe Ms. Turner can remind us. What I was thinking was, kind of administratively, I think it might be easier if we put all of those into the suspense account with the same title, so we know what that money is meant for. But then we can pull it out of suspense as the, as we get the additional materials. I was just thinking, we left some and then we moved some. I, I think it would make more sense if we did, if anything that had a kind of, you know, remaining backup documentation that we were waiting for, if that went into suspense now, it would be much easier for us to use that really as a to-do list, to kind of go through and, and be able to pull things out as the backup documentation is provided.
So would we do that as we come upon those items?
Would, but I would, I would defer to some, to Ms. Turner to let us know what we've, what I may have missed so far. Like, we went through those first few pages. I don't remember everything that, that kind of fell into that category of not having a fully fleshed-out.
We did discuss, there were two items.
I know there was one new position, right? Because there was one new position in your office.
And there was an equity one.
And there was another equity position that we didn't have a job description for.
We didn't make a move on that one. I, I think Ms. Sheehan has the minutes. She can inform us of what we discussed separately.
Under the School Committee line, the one thing you asked for, well, you requested that the field trips
Go into suspense.
that appropriation be moved to another page. You didn't, you didn't stipulate what page you wanted it.
That might be one that I think makes sense to go into the suspense account.
Okay.
I'd make that in the form of a motion now.
Motion by Ms. Martin to move the, I think it was 430,000?
It was 435.
435,000 earmarked for field trips to the suspense account, to be revisited when we have more information on it. Do I have a second on that? Mr. Lay? Seconded by Mr. Lay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Six chaise, one absent.
Oh, that is on the first page, too, under School Committee. So let's just-
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Lay, sorry.
On similar note, then the, the line item for superintendent should be modified to, to the maximum, which is 230.
Yeah, and we can do that once we get to that line.
We're not on that page, so I think we can get to that when we get to the superintendent page. We're on School Committee, aren't we?
And then when we get to page three, we have another one.
Oh, okay. So we are at the, School Committee gets a final number at the bottom, right?
Right.
So let's see. So this is page one, School Committee. Total amount for approval is $442,000 because that amount we just removed. So I need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and to approve the bottom-line figure of $442,000 by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Stowe Rossi. Roll call. Oh, any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Six chaise, one absent.
Okay, so now we go to page two, which is still on the bo, it's the bottom of this page, 1,200. What do we call those numbers, just so I know what to call it?
Deci-function code.
Deci-function code, okay. Deci-function code, 1,200, Superintendent's Budget. Now, is this where, Mr. Lay, you want to move some of this money out? Because, I mean, I would think we want to keep it in, in there. We know we're going to be hiring somebody. I don't know.
Yeah, of course.
It's 240,000.
If, if I could, just for efficiency purposes, I want to try to echo what Ms. Martin mentioned earlier, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair?
Oh, please.
All right. So here, you're appropriating the budget. So wherever is going to be easiest for you to find the line item so that you can help to guide Ms. Turner to what line item you're talking about, to make sure you and she are on the same page, that would be the benefit of this type of conversation. Unless you feel that a certain line item is underfunded or so on. But here, you have built in, because we built this knowing we would go through this transition, a significant amount of flexibility for the committee. You're not obligated until the money is encumbered to actually spend the money. So until you set up a contract with the superintendent, you're not going to be encumbering those funds. That just gives you a line item where you know where the money is, so when you encumber the funds, you're on the same page as your CFO. I think Ms. Turner, or Ms. Martin said, you know, creating a, a to-do list for yourselves. That makes sense to keep for transparency purposes, future meetings. But I would prob, I would encourage the committee, just to make sure we can get out of here by 2:00 AM at the latest, that we kind of look at it in that way and go through each line item. And if, if it's clear to you what it is, we continue moving forward.
Thank you. So I believe the superintendent is recommending we keep the salary where it is. For tracking purposes, it makes sense. It's not an, an item that we're going to be needing programmatic information about or anything. We know, okay. So I would entertain a mo, unless, any concerns with that, Mr. Lay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the bottom-line figure of $1,242,698. Motion by Ms. Chun, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any comments, discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Six chaise, one absent.
Okay, we now go to deci-function number 1,400. And that is Finance and Administrative Services. If you look on the sheet that you have, that Ms. Turner did for us, it's a little bit bigger. We have highlighted in yellow some new expenditures. So we have the Budget and Fund Analyst for $90,000, and Recruitment and Onboarding, which is going to be funded for $100,000. Any questions or comments? Ms. Martin?
So I would just say for those two positions, the, the Budget and Fund Analyst and the Recruitment and Onboarding, I'm not sure what the noun is there, but take those two positions and move them to suspense.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Martin to move those two positions to suspense for a total of $190,000. Seconded by, anyone? Mr. Lay? Any comments, questions? So what are we looking for? Job descriptions for those positions? That would be good to have.
Yeah, I mean, I think what will happen is that we'll be getting the job descriptions, we'll be getting the revised org charts, so we know how these things fit
Okay.
into the existing structure, so we'll be able to know that those are coming.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Who seconded that?
Oh, I'm, yeah, we, I forget who seconded. Who seconded it?
I think it was Mr. Lay.
Mr. Lay did, sorry. Roll call.
He am loving the magnifying glass.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Six chaise, one absent.
And I guess I need a bottom-line figure because then we're looking at a motion to accept the recommendations of the superintendent minus those two items of $190,000, and to approve the bottom-line figure of, does somebody have that? Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Roll call.
We just-
Oh, I didn't get it. What?
We just did it.
That was for the suspense account. Now we're voting on the bottom line.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, really? I'm like
So.
Did we get-
You didn't get them up first or second?
We didn't get a first and second, though, on the bottom-line number that we just got.
Just a quick question. Will you move this suspense account, so that amount be deducted from this amount?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Oh, okay, okay.
We had, Ms. Turner thankfully did the math for us. She took $190,000 off of that huge number. And now I need a motion to approve by Ms. Chun, seconded by Ms. Stowe Rossi, and roll call on the new number.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Six chaise, one absent.
Thank you. Now we go to page four, deci-number 1410, Finance and Operations. So again, if you look at 1410, there's a highlighted position. P.T., Early Learning Coordinator, our feasibility study? For 58, is that, is-
That's a reduction.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a reduction?
Yep.
So it's just highlighted because it's a change?
Yes.
Okay. So then, there's no other new positions in that one? Oh, we have the Maintenance Service number, that changed as well, which I think we discussed that, right? We didn't have questions about that. So for 1410, I need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the bottom-line figure of $5,742,711. Motion by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Ms. Turner?
I just have to point out that when you're... When you said the $5 million, that's actually this page and the previous page. See, it... You see, it's like the total fund? It's the total Deci-function.
All right.
Yeah, it's... If you look, it's $1,901,1.9 million. See right here?
Okay, so I'm going off of this sheet, not the book. So what do you want to... What do we need to change?
You... When you just voted the $5.2 million, that actually includes the previous page. It's... So you see how if you're going this page, it's the subtotals? Right, finish.
Oh.
We didn't need to do the first one.
Right. You didn't need to do the fir... If you're doing it by Deci-function code, then it would be this is the total. But if you're doing it by page...
Page, oh. All right. I didn't... I thought I was doing it by Deci-function.
You revised it to 1,900,100.
Okay, so we have to change the number?
Yeah.
All right, what is the new number?
1,900,100.
So that's $1,901,100? All right. So that's the... Did you get that change? 1,900,100. Okay, so do we have to do that motion again, because the number's different?
If I could make a recommendation, what we should do is the by-function code, so that your vote...
So we shouldn't go by page?
...on the combined 1,410.
I agree.
Yeah, so we did a couple extra votes we didn't need to do. The vote that matters is this one vote for 5.7. And that includes both those pages that are all part of one function. You know what I mean?
I'm totally lost now, because we...
Well, it's just the function was divided into two pages. So rather than vote on each individual page and then a total...
Right. I... So I was trying to vote on function 1,410. That's where we left off, right?
On Page Three and Four combined.
Yeah, but Page Three, we voted on 1,400. Section Code 1,400, which was 3.8 million.
1,410 is a section.
Oh, 1,410 is part of 1,400.
Exactly.
So we... So we don't need to revote those numbers?
They don't... All that matters is if we vote... If we voted on the 5.7, that's the one that matters.
Right. We voted on 5.7, and we voted on 3.8.
We didn't need to do 3.8, but 5.7 comes.
Okay, so we don't have to go back?
We don't have to do it.
All right. So going forward, on Page Five, we're now talking about Instructional Leadership, which is Deci-function code 2,110. So that's... We're looking at 2,110. So I'm going... So is these numbers...
Ms. Doherty? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Just a point. We did subtract some things to go into suspense, so that last number would be different. The 5.7 would be different because we voted some things into suspense, so we'd have to subtract all of those totals.
We didn't subtract it?
Not with the 5.7, no.
Okay, so 1,410 has a different number we need to subtract. Ms. Turner, do you have that number, 1,410?
Yes, it's $5,552,711.
So could I have a motion to approve? Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
All right. So now we're going to do 2,110, Instructional Leadership. Is there anything under 2,110 that we're pulling out? It looks like it's... Nothing's changed. There's nothing highlighted. So I would be looking for a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the bottom-line figure of $2,766,023. Motion to approve by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
So now on my thing, it's what about Department Heads 2120?
They're all included in that.
Oh, that's all under 2110?
Yeah.
Okay, so District Leaders, everybody's under that. So the next item would be the Deci-number 2,200, Principal School Leadership. So we have a couple of yellowed-out areas in that one. We have Assistant Principals. So we're adding five Assistant Principals and a Student Services Specialist at the Freshman Academy. Bless you. Ms. Turner?
One Assistant Principal.
Oh, one is being added. So are there any questions about that? What school is getting that? Do we know that?
I believe it's the STEM. It was done through the Fair Student Fund-in process.
Okay.
This one's a little different, if I could. I would... I would encourage the committee not to move stuff to suspense here, because these are the school-based positions. Principals are going to be off for the summer. You want to allow them the flexibility to move through their hiring season, because they are not 12-month positions for most principals. In addition, you have job descriptions for all of them, and if you don't, they're going to come to you with a job description before they can post them anyhow. But when you get to school-based positions, again, keep in mind that our school-based staff are not 12-month staff.
Correct. Ms. Turner?
Correction. The Assistant Principal that's being added is at the daily.
The daily, okay. And these were positions that the schools chose with their School Side Council. Any other thoughts on that, to leave that in there? Seems to make sense. Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the Principal School Leadership and accept the recommendation of the superintendent to the bottom-line figure of $9,491,719. Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun? Yes. Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Okay, so now on Page Seven, Deci-function Line 2,305, Personnel Classroom Teachers. Ms. Turner?
On this page, your question had been the Latinx Program. Do you want me to move that to suspense and...
So this is the... This is the program that has the Latinx Scholars. Recruitment and Retention at 11-5. We talked about that last time. What is the budget except... Oh, that's not highlighted. Any comments or questions on this page? Ms. Martin?
I just had a question around the health teachers. If they're reflected here, the increase that had been voted on? I think I asked this question last week. I just want to make sure it's there.
Yes, they're...
Included in this Phys Ed Health Teachers?
They are reflected in there, however, we... Mr. Skinner brought it to my attention that two of the schools did not have a health teacher, so we would end up having to come back and ask for money from the fall reconciliation and increase this line at a... If you wanted to.
Well, we want to be able to keep track on that. Would we want to be able to, like, put those two health teachers in suspense, same deal? With the salary? Okay.
What were those schools, do we know? So that means the PINE-AHRTs and the WANG are going to be getting new health teachers, not taking away from their physical education teachers. That's very important. Ms. Thompson?
I was wondering, where is the account for the teachers that might be doing the financial literacy on here? Financial wellness? I'm not sure where they fall, what category they fall in.
I didn't... We didn't add full-time teachers. Would that be a stipend position?
I don't know.
Do you have an answer?
Ms. Desmond?
So currently, we're building out a financial wellness curriculum, K to eight, and we would like to... For it to be taught to all students within the classroom versus it being a separate...
Somebody said...
Right, right. So we want to embed it into everything that goes on throughout the year, so that we are insured that all students are getting that, and it's not on a rotation of six weeks and then nothing for the rest of the year, which is the ALI that's rotation at the middle schools.
Okay. To that point, at some point in this, I think we need to have potential training for the teachers, so that they... So we need to set aside monies for that. I don't know where that would go, but thank you.
Any other thoughts about this section? What about the Latinx Scholars Program? Mr. Rossi, did you have your head up?
I just had a question about some professional development for health teachers in regards to teaching the component about addiction and substance abuse. I was recently at a Sunneville Neighborhood Group where the Little... Great Little Health Alliance, I believe, come in and did a presentation and spoke to the fact about most health teachers do not feel confident about teaching that curriculum. And it was just a little bit disturbing that they're charged with teaching it, and where vaping and substance abuse is so prominent in our city and the demographics of our city. I think if we could put a line item in for some substantial training in that area, especially where our youth are so at risk, if that would be possible for our health teachers.
Ms. Desmond?
So we currently have a District Support Specialist in my office focused on this work. There's a stakeholders group that meets regularly. I'll actually have an update on the work that's been done at our next School Committee meeting. They are building out, you know, selecting a curriculum, building out a scope and sequence map, and then we will be providing professional development to those teachers at the start of next school year.
Thank you.
Ms. Turner?
I just wanted to point out, just being that you are going over all the changes, that there was an additional early childhood expansion position in here to separate out the coordinator and the principal at the Cardinal. I just want to make sure that that's part of... I didn't know if you wanted me to move that to suspense as well, but it's on this page.
So that is the $100,000 position?
Yes.
For a... It's going to be a coordinator, early childhood coordinator?
Yes.
Dr. Boyd?
Yes, you're significantly... My hope would be is that the school district continues to expand to a universal pre-K, full access for the entire community. We've expanded significantly this year, going to continue to expand. That's going to require additional support, hence the additional allocation.
So what is the Wish of the Body? Do you want to put that position in the suspense account as well? What about the Latinx Scholars? We already moved that to the expense account? I don't think we did. We didn't... Okay, so then, well, we have to adjust that bottom-line number to show that. What about the early childhood position? Expansion position for $100,000?
If it benefits the body, what I might suggest, we'll move all of the positions. The total... The real decision that matters for the committee is the lump sum, bottom line, to make sure you're approving a balanced budget. The committee always feels historically more comfortable doing page by page. What you've got to make sure is that the motion you take is for a balanced budget, that that final line item of $295 million is accurate. Here, Ms. Turner can make all of the adjustments within the budget book, bring back to you all of those motions, and can do a review with you of which one she moved on May 17th. I... It's feeling as though we might get caught up in the math and lose sight of the decisions. So I would encourage, make the decisions. Ms. Turner will take the notes, and we just make sure that you're authorizing what you're allowed to authorize, which is a balanced budget at the end.
So, so rather than voting total of each section, we just only vote one vote at the very end?
On numbers. And make... Continue to provide the guidance on what's being moved to which fund code, and Ms. Turner will take the notes. And then you vote on one number at the end, which is the total budget sum at the end that's consistent with what has been allocated to Lowell Public Schools. And then you, I would say, make that motion in accordance with the decisions that were previously made by the committee referencing the fund codes, something along those lines.
Ms. Martin? Can I ask?
Delayed payment? Oh, no, that was when you go through the... After you went... We went through the Fair Student Fund-in, we ended up realizing that the L numbers needed to be adjusted, so we increased them. So, yeah, that's additional money that we gave to them after the Fair Student Fund-in process. In the Fund-in summary, you would see... Yes, if you went in the left-hand side of the Fund-in summary, you would see a line item called Budget Exceptions. It's when we would give them additional funds. For example, the Career Academy last year, that example of giving them $100 and something thousand extra came from that line.
I'm just looking for clarification here. What is the Will of the Body? We're at Function 2,305. There are a number of highlighted areas. Many of them are positions we have job descriptions for. Speech Pathologists, Behavior Specialists, Paraprofessionals. Is there anything from 2,305 that we're taking out?
On the personnel one?
For suspense. Ms. Thompson, did you want to take the Latinx amount out?
Yes, I'd like to put that in suspense.
So that could be added into this.
Okay.
So I... If I'm right, I have a motion by Ms. Martin, and I'm waiting on a second, which I included your scholar, your Latinx Scholars, along with the EC Expansion Coordinator and two health teachers from the PINE-AHRTs and the WANG to all go to the suspense account. Is that correct?
No.
No.
Not the health teachers.
Not the health teachers.
I thought we did put this... I thought we were going to put them in, because we don't... They haven't been assigned yet, so we need to make sure we're aware before they get... So they're on that to-do list.
Okay. Ms. Turner?
So they wouldn't come out of this page because they weren't included, but I would add them to the.
Add them to suspense, and then it would get added.
At the end, and it would get from fall reconciliation, yes.
So they're not going to subtract from the bottom line because they're not in there?
They're not in yet.
Correct.
We're putting two new ones.
So that's a separate motion to add two health teachers to, I would think. So let's do this one first.
Okay.
Because what is the new bottom line with taking the EC position, expansion position and the Latinx scholars out of 2305? What's the new bottom line? Okay. I need to, oh, did we do the suspension or we already did that?
No, you have to do that first.
The suspense.
We've got a motion to move Latinx.
So I need a motion to move the early childhood expansion position and the Latinx scholars for 180,000.
180?
To the suspense account, but named as those two things. The early childhood expansion position and the Latinx scholars. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow, Ms. Chun, Mr. Rossi, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Now I need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and to approve the bottom line figure of 108,928,809 dollars.
Sure.
By? Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
So, so Madam Chair, just have a suggestion. So at the bottom, when we move line item to the suspense account, we don't have to have Ms. Turner do the calculation right now to come with the exact number. Can, can we just use the total that we have and minus X, X being the, the amount being moved to?
I think we have to state the amount. We have to say what the bottom line amount is that we're voting on.
I don't think we need to do that at this point. I think as we go through, we can approve each page as amended, and then at the end, because the total number isn't going to change.
Okay.
We're just shifting it from place to place.
Got it.
So if we, I think to Mr. Delay's point, we can just approve each page as amended without an actual dollar figure, but then at the end, we need to make sure that everything aligns.
We would have to have the number, okay.
Like, the one problem we're going to have now, we put two, if we put these two health teachers into suspense, it's two new positions, that's going to be an additional amount. So when we get the budget back and that shows in it, it's going to be a slightly different number than what we approved tonight. So our final approval will be, include those two teachers. I think I just made it worse.
Right.
I think you could, so.
That's 100% accurate.
Do we have to subtract?
No.
No, we don't have to do anything at this point, but.
All right.
But approve each page as amended.
Okay. I will do that from now on. I won't be saying, I mean, I'm going by my cheat sheet that I was given, that has these really big numbers. I'm happy to say as amended. Much easier for me. All right, so I think we can go right to DESI 2352?
Yep.
Wait a minute. We were on 2305.
So you need to vote that as a thing? We just voted the suspense account, didn't we?
No, we voted the big number, because I said the big number.
Yeah, that was the first, okay.
52?
You're on page, we all set with 2305?
Yep.
So, so now we're going to 2352. Coaching curriculum support? Yeah, medical therapeutic services were part of 2305, correct? Ms. Turner?
At 2, 2305 were your teachers. The next page, it's medical therapeutic, it's 2320.
So it has the same number, but it's a separate?
It's at 2320. This number says 2320.
Oh, this number says 2305. Okay, so it's 2320. That's where we are. So we're on 2320. Medical therapeutic services. So we've got occupational physical therapists. Why is that highlighted? Those are just, are they added, or?
Yes, those were additions.
Additions, okay.
The only one on this page that you questioned was the alternative ed program expansion.
For 1.25 million, right, okay. So is there a motion to move that alternative ed program expansion into the suspense account by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Chun?
Wait, that's an ESAR allocation. You would not want to move that to suspense as your general fund calculation. So your number here that you're approving at the bottom line is going to be your general fund, chapter 70 approval line. The rest is encompassed and included within your budget book for transparency based on the motion of the committee two years back of including all of the ESAR and grant funds here. So I would encourage, again, that you just, you just fund the, the bottom line, a balanced budget at the bottom line. If you want to flag things, allow Ms. Turner to move them across, but you certainly don't want to co-mingle any type of ESAR code inadvertently with a general fund code.
Yeah, so it would still maintain its code. It would just be on the suspension page listed and still in this final column of ESAR 23. Okay, it's fine.
So this is ESAR funding, the 1.25. But how we spend it is very important to me, that when we're looking at alternative education.
Yes.
So we're still, we're planning to still move that to the expense account. We have the motion by you, seconded by Ms. Chun, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
So now I need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as amended by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Thompson, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Okay, so we go to DESI function code 2352. We have PD coaches is highlighted in yellow, math resource teachers and coaches. District support specialist, ELL, math, science. And professional development leaders is also highlighted. Any questions about those highlighted changes? No questions? So are we, if I could ask, we're increasing our support specialists, our district-wide curriculum support specialists? By three?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent? By Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Mr. Rossi, did you have your hand up for a question? No? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Okay, now we are on non-personnel. Textbooks. 2412, 2410. Nothing's highlighted. Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as written. Ms. Delay, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Okay, we are at 2710, guidance counselors. It looks like we're adding one guidance counselor? Is that right? Why does it say 32,000? Oh, that's the total number. And a social worker. Any comments, questions? Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as written? By Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Chun, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Okay. DESI function number 3100, attendance and parent liaison services. So if we look at... I don't see where that is on your, your cheat sheet, Ms. Turner.
Which one are you, which?
I'm looking for the DESI number, 3100. I can go to this page. That is page. Does everybody see that? Because I, where does it say 3100?
Um, what, what, can I, you're looking at the cheat sheet. Oh, that's 3100 right there, but if you're looking at my cheat sheet, well.
Okay. In this book?
No, no, what are you, what are you reading? Do you want to look?
I'm reading off of this.
So, all right, what I'm.
It doesn't say 3100.
It does. 31, you're looking, see, it says it right here, and then it says 3100 right there.
Oh, I see 3,000s here.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. So there's a, there's some new positions on the second page that are highlighted in yellow. District support, ELL, student support, extended learning district support, equity stipends, vaccination clinic, dual-language program implementation, family institute, family parent academy stipends for 394,000, student assignment manager, that's a new position, correct? Have we seen a job description for that? No. What about enrollment placement services? Oh, that's a reduction, okay. So anybody seeing anything else on that 3,000 series? Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry, about the full-time parent liaison, I think that's what it is. It went from 7.7 to 14. In the general fund, yep.
So that too was done by the schools, went through the Fair Student Fund in process. They, the number of schools that wanted a full-time instead of a stipend increased.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I was just wondering if you could explain why the numbers are bolded in red on here? I think that's the student outreach liaison? And I don't know if that was just.
It was probably something that I did to go back to.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if there was something we should be paying attention to.
No, but which, which one was it, just so I can?
I think it's the student, student outreach liaison. The second part of it is just bolded in red, so I didn't know if there was a decrease, erasure.
That's funny, it's not even, oh, okay, yeah, that's just, yeah, my, that's me, just to note for myself. It's not in the book, so when you're referring to it, I'm looking like, where is it red?
What is the wish of the body? Are we moving one of those or any of those into suspense, Ms. Thompson?
I just had one more question about what the equity stipends are stipends for.
Dr. Boyd?
So we have really invested in leveraging teacher leadership, and so we've been using teachers and school-based educators where we can in, in developing and leading workshops.
Ms. Martin?
If there are no other changes, I'd move to approve the superintendent's recommendation.
So did we move the student manager position to the suspense account? We don't have a job description on that one. It's called student assignment manager. Okay, so, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson, to move the student assignment manager to the expense account, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
So now we need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and as amended, and, I'm not, that's it. Motion to accept, I'm not going to say the bottom line figure, because you said I don't have to. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Chun, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Now we are at... What about medical health services 3200? Nothing's changed in, that's at the bottom of this page, isn't it? Oh, we already did that? Yeah, I think we did.
I'm on page 13, transportation.
Okay, transportation. That's DESI function code 3300. Need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and to approve the bottom line figure. We have some highlighted areas under transportation. I don't know if anybody had questions about that, or are we just going to move forward? Ms. Chun, did you have a question?
Just to clarify from, for me, is for the transportation, since LCCPS uses the transportation, do I, do I sustain my vote or not vote at all, or would that affect anything at all?
You can do whatever's comfortable to you, but you're not personally benefiting from transportation services that are being provided per state statute. But whatever makes you feel most comfortable, Ms. Chun, you have stated multiple times for the record your place of employment. You're not obligated by law, I don't believe. Dr. Hall, would you concur?
So I would entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as posted, Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Ms. Martin, you have a question?
Just on the, the total labor and benefits for food services staff, looking at that reduction.
Isn't that a different number?
It's on the page.
Yeah, that's 3,400.
Okay.
So let's do this vote, then we'll go to 3,400. Roll call on transportation.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Okay, so now we're at.
Food service.
3,400. So 3,400. Ms. Martin, you had some questions?
Yep, I, I was just curious about the reduction in the labor and benefits line.
That is just, when we update, when people leave and get replaced by lower-paid people, I update the numbers. I didn't update the numbers all throughout because of negotiations, but on this particular one, I, when I ran the report, this was the lower, the more accurate number. So it is a true decrease. It's not a decrease in the number of FTEs, it's a decrease on the actual amount of payroll.
Because of, of retirements and?
I would, that would be what I would think, or just, you know, nationwide thing where everyone's, what do they call it, the great?
Resignation?
Resignation, yeah.
Well, leave it to us to be two years too late. Okay. And then my only other question was, you know, just looking at food costs, I know that, you know, I mean, we've got it level-funded. My sense is that that's going to go up, would be, but I know that it involves the roll-out account and all that, so that's fine.
So we don't bother?
Those are my questions.
So, do we actually vote on this?
It's revolving fund.
It's revolving fund, so we don't, we don't need to vote on it. Okay, so we can go right to the next function, item number is 3510, athletics and student activities personnel. So it looks like the only change is under non-personnel K-8 athletics investment of 150,000. Any questions or concerns? I would entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent for item, for DESI function number 3500 by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Chun, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Del Ay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Okay, now we're at DESI function number 4,000, custodial and security services personnel. No changes to this? Except, there is a highlighted area for contracted services, so we're just increasing that by 100,000, is that correct, Ms. Turner?
Yes, and it's due to, like, we haven't increased this line in years and all of the cost for facilities and supplies and equipment have gone up, so we put it in there.
Does that include paying for the feminine hygiene products? And that, is that budgeted here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I would accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent for item 4,000 by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Del Ay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
So now we go to 5,100, I mean, function 5100, 5200, employee benefits and retirement personnel. We see there's a couple of highlighted areas because things have gone up with health and dental insurance premiums. Need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent by Ms. Del Ay, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Del Ay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
And now we're at 5350, rental of buildings. So is that right? The central administration office lease has, it looked like it's doubled. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Boyd?
Yes, these are contractual items. The committee's already approved the contracts and is already under contract, so this is more performative than anything. These are leases that you are in active lease agreements with landlords. These are the actual costs.
Wow. Okay, motion to approve this incredibly high rent. Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Del Ay, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Del Ay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
So the 7,000 series, capital outlay. Any comments, questions? Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and to approve as written. Ms. Martin?
So the capital improvements that's listed here at 100,000, I know that's our traditional kind of placeholder for that, but do we, where exactly was the 10 million that we discussed?
On the previous page.
Okay, go ahead.
On the, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
On the previous page, on page 15, it's on the bottom right-hand side, it's under the ESAR column.
ESAR, thank you. Thank you very much.
Ah, I see it, okay. And do I have a second on approving this, Ms. Del Rossi? Okay, so we had a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi, to accept the recommendation of the superintendent. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Del Ay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
And now we are at item 9000, out of district budget. That's the 9,000 series, so that's out of district tuition, after-doc program with the vocational school, early college promise. Any questions or comments? Motion to accept. Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Del Ay?
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm thinking, do we need, so we have a motion here to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and to approve the bottom line figure for the suspense account? We do that first? What is that amount, Ms. Turner?
I don't, I don't have to run it. It's listed here at 840, but all the additions today.
Right.
I'll bring that.
This number you have?
So we accept it as amended?
Yeah, that's it.
Yep, and then...
Oh, as amended, say that again, okay.
So, yep.
So we need a motion, and then we'll clarify the math when we get together next week. Okay, got it. Need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as amended for the suspense account. Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Del Ay?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
So now we just need a motion to approve, or we just wait for Friday, for Wednesday to do that? Approve the bottom line number?
It doesn't, in theory...
The bottom line's not going to change.
Well, the bottom line, it is going to change with this, at least with those two additional positions.
Right.
So I think we might be better served, you know, we've reviewed every page, approved every page, we do the final approval at the meeting.
Okay, does that make sense to you, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, you're required to take a vote anyhow. We previously posted budget adoption for May 17th, so...
Okay, so at this point, we would just need a motion to recess and to resume the budget?
Include the hearings.
Adjourn?